To all law enforcement, all across America. Would everybody please stand?
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stripes and bright stars fill the perilous night? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Ms. Bettis, can you take the roll, please?
Good evening, Your Honor. Mayor Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Squires?
Here.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Here.
Councilmember Lynch?
Here.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda as presented.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch?
I move for the approval of the council agenda for Monday, July 11, 2016.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squi...uh, Mayor Walker.
Aye, motion passes seven zero. Don't think we have any community event announcements tonight. We'll move on to item six, comments from state and county officials. We have Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. It's always a pleasure to be here with you. And I know it's a nice sunny, warm summer night, and probably a lot of folks are enjoying that outside right now. But just, I just came from, and I know, Mayor, you were there, and some of the other council members were there at the Autos for Autism event over at Schoolcraft, next to Schoolcraft. And what an incredible turnout over there. I mean, it's, I think it's the largest I've ever seen at any of those Autos for Autism events. There had to be, I don't know what the final number is, I bet there was three to 400 cars there. And the number of people, it's gotta be a very, one of the largest crowds they've ever had. And so it's really great to see an event like that for such a good cause. And Abraham Lincoln was even there, walking around, so. So, it had to be the place to be, right? But anyway, seriously, I just wanted to stop in too. There was a mistake made by a member of my staff last month about the Parks Village, and it was very mistaken as she was speaking. But it is not a tax increase. It's about the Parks Village. It's essentially a continuation of the current rate, which is under .25 percent. Or, under, sorry, under .25 mils. So it's less than a quarter of a mil. It's a continuation of the amount that had been on folks' taxes for probably the last 15 to 20 years. So it's another five-year timeframe. And one of the nice things about it, and I've spoken about it before, is that this village language includes language that guarantees the locals will all get their share. There's no negotiation, there's no holding anyone hostage down at the county and saying, "Well, we don't know if we're gonna do it or not, or we'll give it to you, but not to you." So, it's set in stone now, and I introduced that resolution at the commission meeting, or that ordinance. And I was proud to do that, because now we've taken that off the table, so our locals will know they'll always get that 15% to each commission district. And then, my plan is always to continue what my predecessor did, is to make sure that the communities have the expectation of the same amount based on what is collected in their particular community. But anyway, there was one other provision in that too, that said that if a district gets less than five, actually $50,000, or not a, not a community, but a commission district, then this will guarantee they'll at least get 50. So if we ever were to fall in the 12th district below $50,000, we would be guaranteed to get $50,000. So that helps some of the poorer districts. But it's not at the expense of others, which I thought was an important thing to, to, to fight for. But anyway, I hope you all are having a great summer. I will not take advantage of the opportunity to speak to you and in front of you, to make a political speech. I am running for election, but that's as much as I'll say. But thank you so much for all you do, and I look forward to continuing working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, we have no petitions or communications tonight, no public hearings. We'll move on to item nine, the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch?
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, items nine A, one and two.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Any discussion from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye, motion passes seven zero. Move on to item B, our study session. B1, supplemental appropriation, drunk-driving case flow assistance. What's council's wish?
C.
C? Resission of traffic control orders, item two. C? Item three, 2016-18 Neighborhood Stabilization Program?
C.
C?
Yep.
Okay. Item four, proposed charter amendments, mayor term of office and councilmember term of office.
C.
C.
Okay, we'll move on to our C agenda. C1, supplemental appropriation for drunk-driving case flow assistance. Councilmember Squires?
I move to approve the following supplemental appropriation, recognizing revenues for drunk-driving case flow assistance, increasing revenues and expenditures in the amount of $10,000.
Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarge. Any discussion on this? This is the money that comes into courts for drunk-driving cases, and we're moving the money into the expenditures to pay for this program?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye, motion passes seven zero. Item C2, rescission of traffic control orders.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch?
I move to rescind traffic control orders number 305 and 391, after an engineering and traffic study determined them to be obsolete and no longer reasonable.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Kerwin. This is the no parking signs that used to be along Berger Junior High. They tore that building down, so these no parking signs are no longer needed. So, we gotta do this order to, to remove the signs. That's what this is all about. Any other comments from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye, motion passes seven zero. C3, 2016 to 18 Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Councilmember Squires?
I move to approve the selection of enterprising real estate and JSR Funding LLC as qualified participants in the 2016 to 2018 Neighborhood Stabilization Program, to authorize the city manager to exercise our right to purchase selected available commercial and residential properties for a public purpose in accordance with MCL 211.78M1, and to authorize the city manager to execute all documents necessary to acquire and convey the selected properties from funds received by the above participants.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Any discussion from the table?
Mayor?
Councilmember McCarge?
Um, this afternoon, I was able to talk and have, had some questions or about this program, mainly to make sure the public realizes that... Well, my question was, if we, the city does not enter into the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, will the county still foreclose on these homes? And the answer is yes. If we don't go into this program, the county still will foreclose. The other question I'm actually going to ask Mrs. Bettis is, uh... Did you do, you know, because we talked this afternoon, what did you do, do a little different this year?
One, and I just wanna say, if we don't exercise our right of first refusal, then yes, the count, the properties remain in foreclosure. First, the foreclosure happens, and then we can exercise, we can choose or choose not to exercise our right of first refusal. And so, they are always foreclosed on, no matter what we do. And yes, along with the city manager, we went to visit the list that the county provided of potential foreclosed properties earlier last month. And we went door to door, and knocked on doors, and left cards to make sure that people were aware that they had until the 30th of June to still redeem their properties, which have technically been foreclosed on, but there's a redemption period. And the county, in addition, had made extra effort to make sure they stayed open late that night. I'm told that the line was around the corner. And even when they had to shut it down, they still gave people cards to say, "Come back tomorrow, and we'll still honor that," as if you were here on, on the last day of redemption.
Thank you.
Any other comments? From the general public?
That, uh, who'd idea, what the, who'd idea, what the? Who'd your idea?
Was it my idea? Not originally, but for Garden City. No, I don't think it was my idea. I think, um, David Fetter brought a gentleman here who brought that program to us.
If I live in the city, can I live in the city?
Are you leaving the city?
No, if I live in the city.
Are they, are you allowed to live in the city?
Yes.
Of course. Always.
People, people moving out so quick now. I got out, I got out on the, on the, on the, on James and the, and the, uh, Helen, out on the, on the south west side. Anthony, Anthony, go in there.
Well, me and you gonna be here for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Jones?
Mike Jones, Stanley, Garden City. Do we have any idea how many properties are involved at this time?
We do not. The, tomorrow, the county has told us they will give us the final list after they've added up all the numbers and processed all the payments, I guess.
And we will at that, starting at that point in time, also determine how many of those are occupied?
We can try to, yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor? I just have a question.
Councilman McCarge?
Would that make a difference?
It, it, it can't. The house is foreclosed upon whether they're occupied or not.
Your Honor, I will mention, the preliminary list seemed considerably smaller this year.
And, um...
And then, when we went out on that list, several home occupants that we made contact with have since contacted us back and said they've made arrangements, either payment program, or caught up on the taxes. So, we're not expecting a really big crop of houses this year.
Um, city manager, for the, then for the residents, can you give us some of the results we've, we've seen from last year's tax foreclosed homes that, that we bought on first right of refusal?
Um, we've had, off the top of my head, three that come immediately to mind that are already reoccupied.
Refurbished and...
Yes. Those three are reoccupied.
Cleaned up and resold and...
It's been over a half million dollars in private dollars that have been invested in the community so far. As you know, part of the program is, we, we make them, them being the developers, we make them demonstrate to us that they're investing the money, that they're doing the things we expected them to do. They also, the fruit market up on Warren Road, the, the market itself was destroyed, was torn down, demolished. That was part of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, not originally intended to be part of the program, but it became part of the program. The eyesore of a house that remains on that property is a, a different story, but something that we're working on. We've seen two commercial parking lots that have been repaved and restripped as a result of this program, and a number of buildings that have been brought up to the building code. We have several, several homes that are about to go on the market, if they're not there already. And, um, the, the prices are good. So they're having an impact of, of raising the housing value here in Garden City.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarge?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye, motion passes seven zero. Item, uh, C4, proposed charter amendments. We'll start with 4A, mayoral term of office, from two years to four years.
Mayor?
Councilmember King?
I move to approve the following resolution authorizing the submission of the proposed ballot language to amend section 2.03 of the Charter of the City of Garden City to the electorate, and authorize and air all activities necessary to place in said proposal on November 8, 2016 ballot.
Support. Support from Councilmember Kerwin. Discussion from the table? I guess I'll start out. I, I for one am for this. Being mayor, I'm on my fourth two-year term. I can tell you, it comes around really quick. This doesn't extend my term. This is for whoever gets elected at the next election. If the, this just puts it on the ballot for the residents to say, "We wanna elect our mayor for two years," or "We wanna elect him for four years." If it was to pass in November, then whosoever elected after that would serve four years instead of two. So it does not extend my term. But I can tell you, as being mayor four times for two years, it comes around really quick. And when I'm long gone, the way I look at it, a new mayor coming on, he's just getting acclimated to the job at the two-year point, and he's gotta go out and campaign and go up for reelection. And the mayor's job is a little different than the council members. He's gotta, all year long, take notes, put together his State of the City speech. He's gotta do a Memorial Day ceremony, Veterans Day ceremony. He's getting to know people in the community in that two years, and, and lining up stuff to, to do these actions. And then, all of a sudden, he's, he's up for reelection and maybe not elected, or whatever, and then you get another new guy. I just feel that every two years comes too quick. And again, for a new mayor, he's just getting acclimated. I would like to see, like several other, not all cities, but several other cities, the mayor is elected for a four-year term. So I would like to see us going forward to have the Garden City mayor be elected for four years. Again, that does not extend my term. I'm not talking about my term now, doesn't give me any more time. It's for whoever gets elected, if the residents vote for it. And that's, that's my comments.
Mayor?
Councilmember King?
I totally agree with you. And I also think that the council people should have a four-year term. I'm all for that. If we had to make any kind of a change, it would be, keep them at two and put the mayor at four, for sure. But I agree with the fact that you just start getting, getting rolling when everything is going, and you understand what's going on. About that time, you become somebody, and that's what we need. We need people that are able to handle that for the first, or pardon me, for the four years. And I think that's a much better swing than the two years that you have right now.
Mayor? Councilmember Jacobs?
I, I think in theory, that's a good idea. But looking at advantages, pros and cons for the citizens, I don't see much of a advantage to us, either council being on for four or the mayor being on for four. I think it's, uh, you know, if you, in years past, we've had people up here that probably shouldn't have been. People realized it afterwards, but then they were stuck for four years with them. And I, I don't, I think the two years is kind of a safeguard that you fit in, you're doing what's right for the citizens, you'll get reelected. You know, the campaigning, it's, it, yes, it, it does take some time and some signatures and all that, and I know that's a pain. But I think to change the amendment, or the charter, and then if we find out that the people, you know, voted in, and then, in, in a couple of years, it's wrong, we're, we're stuck with it, 'cause we're, it's gonna be hard to change back again. So, I think what's working is, what we have is working. I'd just soon keep what we have.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch?
I see both sides of it. I think the two years is working. I know some mayors that maybe shouldn't have had more than two years. We would have liked to have had them less than that, if we could have. However, that being said, I don't have a problem putting it on the ballot, because it's not me that's going to be saying, "Yes, we're gonna do it," along with the rest of the council, and it's gonna happen. It's us saying, "Let the residents of Garden City vote on it." So if you're inclined to say yes, you're gonna vote yes. If you're inclined to say no, leave it as it is, you're gonna vote no. I'm all for letting people decide in Garden City which way they want it to be, because ultimately, that's who it impacts.
Thank you. Mayor?
Councilwoman McCarge?
Okay, I've lost a little bit of sleep over this one, because I looked down on the table, and any one at this table, I would be very comfortable having four years or more. But I was all, I also, as most of you know, worked for the city for many years. And I've dealt with, and worked with many mayors and many council people. And what bothers me is, there have been council people, there have been mayors, that after two years, we were very fortunate that they were voted off. My, I, I, I think how we're doing it now works. The other thing is, when I ran for the first time, I truly hoped that I would only be elected for two years, because I wasn't sure, because of my hearing impairment, I couldn't even do the job adequately. I think that there's probably people who would say, "Hey, two years? Yeah, I can do that. Four years? Hmm, I'm not sure." But my biggest concern is, is getting elected officials in for four years, and after a year or a year and a half, we know it is not a good thing for this community. So I am, I, I just think we should leave it alone. Thank you.
Comments from the general public? Okay, I agree with Councilmember Lynch, where, you know, let's let the people, let's put on the ballot. I'd like to see it go on the ballot. We work for the people, let the people decide how long they wanna elect their mayor for. That's my final comment. And no, no further comments? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs?
No.
Councilmember McCarge?
No.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye, motion passes five zero. Moving on to item four B.
Five two.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Zero.
Five, five two. Councilmember, number four B, councilmember term of office? Uh, Mayor? Councilmember Kerwin?
We approve the following resolution authorizing the submission of the proposed ballot language to amend section 2.05 of the Charter of the City of Garden City to the electorate, and authorize all activities necessary to place said proposal on November 8, 2016 ballot.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Discussion from the table? Councilmember Squires?
I have mixed emotions on this one. In one respect, you know, two years, you're just getting to know the job as a councilperson. And four years, you know, would give you a, a good amount of time to learn it. But I think, I think if the public is going to be able to vote on one, they should be able to vote on both.
Okay. Any other comments from the table?
I personally, Mayor, don't care for the idea of council. Everybody have a four-year term, but, um... I would vote for it to give it to the, to the public, though.
Okay.
Let them decide.
And we would still have two every election, 'cause we're staggered now.
Three.
Or three, you're right, three. So, we would never have all seven, could be eliminated at one election, where you have a totally brand-new council that's never served. So you would always have a little bit of stability with at least three members on, so, okay.
Well, council, you'd have four and two.
Right. But you'd have stability. You would, you wouldn't have a chance of having a complete...
Well, you know what? You could, you could have four, four new council people.
Well, speaking of that, how is it gonna be? Are we gonna have it four and two, or three and three?
What he was saying is, you could have a whole new council elected. You could have four council members that are brand-new, with two that are older. Is what he was saying.
But the way, if the public decides they wanna do this council...
But our terms are already staggered, that's not gonna change.
But what are we gonna have? Are we gonna have it three and three?
It'll...
No.
Two and four.
If this, if this amendment was passed, it would be that four council people were elected in one two-year, in one odd-year election, and then, two council members and the mayor would be elected on the opposite, on the next...
So it would be four and two.
Odd-year.
Right. Any other comments from the table? From the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye, for the, let the public okay this.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs?
No.
Councilmember McCarge?
No.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye, motion passes five two. We'll let the residents decide. Okay, we will move on to item 10, public comments for items that were not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, come to the podium, there's a five-minute time limit. State your name. Mr. Jones?
I apologize for not being here earlier, so I, I missed your community announcements and so forth. But I did wanna comment about the opening of the new restaurant. Burger, what is it called?
Great Lakes Burger.
Great Lakes Burger. It was nice to see the mayor there for the ribbon-cutting and have the city presence, as well as... as well as, while I was there at least, our county commissioner was there also. Another great event that is just now concluding is the Auto for Autism Program. And we had what I thought was a fantastic turnout. Again, the mayor and the county commissioner were there during the time period that I was there, as well as Councilman Jacobs. There may have been others there, but I missed them. It was a big crowd and it was a great event and I'm glad to see so many people turning out to give support to the autism program. Also, I'd like to mention that our community chat podcast this week will be at seven o'clock on Thursday instead of eight o'clock. It'll be at the new proposed art center there next to the Moose. All people are welcome. It's our 300th show, so it's a big milestone for us, and we certainly hope everyone can either turn out in person to get a tour of the facilities and see what they've got planned or tune in live or later by one of the media outlets that we have for the community chat. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? City manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few items tonight, pretty well all DPS, all the time. First, I want to mention that the 2015 water report should have reached everybody's home by now. As it reflects, the findings are excellent, no concerns. There are also, take the time to read this, there are some things that I'm sure you have no interest in. And then there are some, some interesting tips on water, on waste disposal. It's a good little pamphlet to take the time to take a look at. Also, our changeover to Rizzo, it's gone just as smoothly as we expected. The outgoing solid waste vendor did not exactly pick up the cans in accordance with their original verbal commitment. As a result, the city went out to get those cans picked up off the streets. They've collected well over 1,000. Republic's got a bill coming for this, and you're wondering probably, how can we force them to pay it? Well, the fact is, we owe them money. So we'll make that deduction, and there you go. Everybody should have their first 96-gallon cart by now, their green cart. In addition, as of Friday, 2,183 homes have called requesting recycling carts. So that's a, that's a good start, but we're not done. I encourage people to call. And just so you know, it's written twice here in very large letters for me, so there are no further mistakes made on the telephone number. Or much easier, if you go to www.rizoservices, R-I-Z-Z-O, services.com. They've got a button on there, you click on Garden City and you can order up your recycling cart. If you're still trying to get a second trash bin delivered to your home, you can order that also. I do want to mention that the second cart delivery, while it has already started, it's going to be slowed and somewhat delayed due to a production issue. Not any problem on the city's part or even our solid waste haulers' part. It's just, there was just too much on them apparently. So we thought that starting today, we would see more second carts delivered, but the fact is, it's gonna slow down this week and probably not really start until July 18th, although as I drove around the city today, I did see some homes with two carts. Whether they were stolen from a vacant home down the street, I don't know, but the two carts are out there. Our thanks, DPS's thanks to everybody who has been so patient, those who have had their Republic cart sitting out at the street for over a week. We don't know what went wrong here, but DPS stepped in and started taking care of it. If you were to happen to glance in the DPS yard, you'd see we barely have room for any DPS vehicles. DPS also appreciates the patience of people who are expecting and need a second cart and haven't gotten it yet. It is coming. We're not playing any games, you don't have to jump through hoops to get it, just let us know that you need it and you will get it. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
May I ask?
Councilmember Lynch?
Mr. Murray, and for those few houses that still have their brown carts, that somehow they got missed or they were in the backyard when the collection happened, what do you have to say for them?
Leave the brown cart out at the curb. Republic theoretically is supposed to be coming through over the next two weeks on an identical cycle to when they were normally picking up trash and picking up the carts. We'll see how that plays out, since I went through the area that was scheduled for trash pickup today, and as you know, Councilmember Lynch, there were a lot of brown carts in that neighborhood.
Yes, Your Honor. Okay, thank you.
City Attorney, Mrs. Mullen, if you could anything for us?
Good to see you here. Great to see you. It's a pleasure to be here. No, no additional comments.
Okay. Councilmember McCarrick?
Well, I'd like to say my condolences to the Borwicki family, Harold Borwicki, the Wyland family, Ed Wyland, and the Kapalinski family. You know, the Harold and Borwicki and Ed Wyland were very, very active volunteers in the city, especially when I was right in the middle of my career, so I was, had the pleasure of knowing them quite well. Donna Kapalinski passed away. I didn't get that information until late, but Donna, at one time, worked for City Hall for a limited period of time, but her husband Dennis has been a longtime member of the Parks and Rec Commission, so I send my condolences. On a better subject, the Garden City Garden Walk will be held this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. The weather's supposed to not be quite so hot, and it's supposed to be a clear day. If you want to see some pretty amazing gardens, take the time to see what the citizens of Garden City do to make this city still be called Garden City because of all the gardens. Tickets can be purchased at Barson's Greenhouse or at Lucky Dog Daycare. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
Okay. And on to that, they're only $8, too. It's not very much, so it's fun to do. Okay, I have one thing here for you. It's the business scavenger hunt that the GCBA is doing, and it's unscramble the business names and let the hunt begin. I'm gonna read this to you so folks can get it. You can get this either online or at the DDA if you want to partake in this. And it's unscramble the business names below to match to the businesses' clues on the clue page. When visit, then visit, good, the business to answer the question or follow the instructions given in the game clue for that business, where clue requires you to take something with you, place all items in the bag provided, and staple to your clue sheet. When you have completed all clues, return to the downtown development on or before 3:00 on July 22nd to be entered into the drawing. And they are gonna have the winners at the Music in the Park, which is on Thursday, the 28th, and the music begins at 6:00. So they're gonna have a lot of fun with this, and all you have to do is go and get one of these or go online, and it would be online under Garden City, okay, GCB, yeah, Garden City Business Alliance, okay, and you can have a little bit of fun and enjoy a day.
You left out the most important part.
Oh, here goes.
The winner will receive $500. And there will be other prizes.
Yes.
I think totaling another $500. But it's a good way to see the businesses, and hey, the money doesn't hurt.
And other than that, I don't have anything to say, other than it's a beautiful day.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yeah, Mayor, my condolences go out to the Borwicki, the Wyland, and the Kapalinski families. I didn't even hear about, about her yet, so. Anyway, other than that, like I say, normally every meeting, try and shop local, helps us all. Watch out for the small kids out there. And one thing, I'd like, I'd like the city manager, if you could let the chief of police know, there's a guy over on, I think it's, it's either James or Bridge, I think it's Bridge Street, he's got nine of those brown garbage cans. So I think he, it's, in fact, I think he's sitting back there, you know? Anyway, we put ours out, the brown cans. I don't know, my wife says, you know what? She goes, I'm thinking, I'm gonna keep these cans. I says, what are you gonna do with them? She goes, I don't know, but they don't want them. So I was, I was going to take them over to DPS, and I talked to Pat, and he goes, just pull them back out, we'll pick them up. And as I was talking to him, three loads of the brown cans came into the DPW. So there had to be a, I don't think one hand, I obviously knew what the other was doing. And then, did you want to report on our new police vehicles?
I believe the parts are in, I saw an invoice today.
The parts?
The parts. That was the holdup, the parts.
Oh.
So the parts are in now.
Wow, okay, we won't discuss that anymore. But thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
That's it.
Councilmember Squires?
Yes, just a couple of things. First, I want to send out my condolences to two ladies that are very special to me, that are longtime Garden City residents. Their sister Audrey passed away the other day, and so to Elaine Burton and Noreen Trahalo, my condolences, you're in my thoughts and prayers. Also, my condolences to the Borwicki family. Harold was very active, along with his wife, in the UPC for many years, and you are also in my prayers. And now it's time to announce the first United Methodist Church of Garden City, located at Merriman and Maplewood, are starting their summer concert series. And the first one, instead of reading them all like I did last year, I will start with just each council meeting, I'll just read the ones coming up. So on July 27th, that will be their first one, the Brightmore Praise Band will bring you to your feet as they sing and praise the Lord. So that is the first concert series, and they start at 6:30 in the church sanctuary, and they last anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half, and they are free. And that's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Lynch?
First, I'd like to welcome Lieutenant Gibbons to our meetings. I think he's going to be a regular fixture back there, so get comfortable shoes for standing. Again, my condolences go to the Wyland, the Borwicki, and the Kapalinski families, again, longtime community members and active people within the community. Someone called and asked, they thought that the green cans were smaller than the brown cans. They're not. They're the exact same size. It's an optical illusion, however, because the brown cans were smaller as they went up and then got wider, which made them appear taller, because they were taller, but it's the same capacity. The green cans are a little wider on the round part, and then when they go up, they're a little bit shorter. I think it's a little easier to move the green cans because they are shorter, and it just makes it a little bit easier to move. But they are still the same sizes. And yes, if you are watching this meeting right now, it's quarter to eight, and Autos for Autism is still going on over at the Garden City Middle School. It'll be going on until 9:00. It was so hard to pick my favorite car today, but I did pick a 1969 Plymouth GTX, really cute car. So go over and see if you can find my car along with the other cars that were picked and enjoy yourself. It's a great cause. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Jacobs?
Just a couple of things. I was at the Autos for Autism also, and it was absolutely phenomenal. If you like cars, there were a lot of them to walk around and look at. As the clouds parted, more cars showed up, and it was, it was really nice, and a ton of people. So that worked out good. I'd like to say thanks to DPS. We had a road that they, they're not, they're not road pavers by any means, they're not, you know, one of the road crews, but they repaved part of Craig, a block section. I thought they did a, for the lack of equipment that we have, I thought they did a really good job. They came out as good as a city crew is gonna do with the limited equipment. So they did a good job. And that's, that's it.
Your Honor? Okay, thank you. Ms. Bettis?
I'd like to just talk a little bit about election.
Do we have an election coming up?
Oh, boy, do we. So of course, we were all sad to hear about the passing of our representative Julie Pulwicky, and she was a candidate for the 11th district, which is our district for state representative. And because she was on the ballot, we are required to reprint those ballots. And so that's quite a little process. It involves the political party of the, of Ms. Pulwicky and delegates and other stuff that is way too boring and frightening to listen to. And so that was done last Thursday, and those ballots, we hope, will be to us sometime, I'm gonna guess, next week. And then as soon as those ballots are available, we will get those distributed. And then, yay, we're gonna have another election. So the ballot that Ms. Pulwicky was on was for the next term, which starts in January of 2017. And so the replacement ballots that we hope to distribute next week will be for that position and that term, as well as all the other positions. Our governor, Snyder, I believe is his name, decided, because it is his decision, to have a special primary and special election in addition to this, which will provide for a representative to represent our district for the period of November 8th through January 2nd. So about six weeks after everything is all certified, but that includes Thanksgiving and Christmas. And we're going to have that election on August 30th. So yes, we are going to have two elections in August. Yay. So let's just try to put that out of our mind. We'll get through August 2nd. Those replacement ballots will be out to everyone as soon as possible, and if you, and then we'll talk about August 30th. If you see me crying, just keep walking.
Okay. Okay, I got a few things. Since we have our city attorney here, city manager, I'd like to check into, we get a lot of fireworks complaints, and I know our ordinance says the day before, the day of, and the day after. A couple of questions I have is, number one, can we limit the number of tents next year that sell fireworks throughout our city? Can we just say the first five people that sign up instead of having 20 tents or whatever? So can we limit the number of tents? And could we, I know they have to get a special permit to sell, and it's like 60 days. I would like to, can we sell fireworks starting June 1st and end it on July 5th? Because they're allowed to light fireworks the day after. So I don't see no reason for selling fireworks after July 5th, if they're still buying them on July 11th, July 12th, they're still lighting them off, and I'm still hearing them, and I think we need to limit the sales and cut it off. I would like to see June 1st to July 5th. Can we do that on the permit, when we issue them, that July 5th, your tents gotta come down? And can we limit the number of tents? If we could, you know, if that could come back to council. And to the residents, it's hard to do, and I was out there with the police. Fireworks are everywhere, you can't You can't...we gave out warnings, we gave out tickets, but you can't get everybody. And I know the dogs were...people's dogs were freaking out and, you know, Lansing handed us this mess and we're dealing with it. But I would still like to see if we can tighten up some more.
Mayor, as a city, can't we refrain from that? Can't we do something and not allow it in Garden City? Or can we not?
Well, we can ask the city attorney to let us know on that as well.
Because that's the only way...
And I'm all for July 4th. That's our Independence Day. But fireworks two weeks before July 4th, two weeks after, it's getting ridiculous. I mean, celebrate...I mean, you have Christmas, you have one day. You have Thanksgiving, you have one day. July 4th is like the month of June and July. It's crazy.
But you also have Memorial Day and Labor Day.
I know.
There's like 10 different holidays that they allow.
I understand that. But we got to look at how we can tighten up. And I think if we limit the tents, if we limit the days they can sell, to me, they have no business selling after July 5th. If you let them sell on July 18th, 19th, you're going to hear them all the way to August 1st. Because they bought them, they want to light them off. So let's see if we can tighten that up, if it's possible. Just asking to check. So I appreciate that. Again, condolences to Harold Pulwicky. He was mayor's underprivileged children for decades in Garden City, a big-time volunteer. And then Ed Wyland served on the planning commission for several years. So our condolences definitely go out to their families. On a good note, it's been a good week. Cut the ribbon for Great Lakes Burger Bar over here by Kroger's here. Autos for Autism tonight. A shout-out to the DPS workers for the storm cleanup. They did a great job. And folks, pray for our country. I think America's in trouble. We need to learn to respect one another. We need to learn to live together with each other and respect law enforcement, respect our first responders. It's just...it's sad. And pray for our country. That's all I have. No further business. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, sir.